Just get strategic out of the way. So I'll call the order Strategic Planning for Tuesday, April 5th. Let the record show that all aldermen are present. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous committee meeting. Could I get a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by...
Three of us.
Well, it's Strategic Planning, so Sonya can't second.
I'm on it.
Oh, did Linda? All right. Seconded by Alderman Witt. All in favor? Aye opposed. All right. Good to go there. No unfinished business. I wanted to give you guys a new referral here for consideration. A discussion item. So, the mayor and I last, I guess it was on Friday, I flew over the hill and made it back. Vortex, as well as Clark Patterson Lee were going to be in Oleen to meet with the mayor, myself, our engineering at the, and walk the site and get a layout of the facility. You know. And so, we did that. It was a very good meeting. With that being said, the consensus between Vortex and our engineering firm was for us to perhaps reconsider the game plan. And, and I did send you, I apologize, it was late. I forwarded you an email from all of you from our engineering firm, Jason Havens, Clark Patterson Lee, that outlines the, eliminating the existing pools and reusing that site. Where the existing pools is, it would exactly be the same dimensions and square footage that we need. It would allow us to really stretch our dollars and allow the facility to be that much better. It would not require an external building that would be another pump house. We would be able to walk the internal pump room that is used for the existing pools. They would be able to get everything out of there and use that internal room as the pump room and sanitary, sanitizing room for the splash park. And, the, if you go over to look at the facility, one key thing to note, the area that we were kind of talking about is, is a lot lower than the existing pool area. They would have to bring in a tremendous amount of fill to raise that and a tremendous amount of concrete, plus the concrete work and all the work that needs to be done on the existing pool. So, I would encourage you to, like I said, I, I, that's kind of the rundown. I sent you exactly what his recommendations are. I forwarded that to all of you. The long story short of it is that for us to still stay within the dollar amount that we've kind of set aside, they can stretch that a lot further. And then I asked the mayor to reach out to Chris Schuerey to give us an idea of what type of potential cost savings we would have, eliminating the need for the lifeguards there, as well as the abundance of chemicals just because of the sheer gallon size, the volume size of those pools. And if I'm, Bill, you forwarded that to me. I've got it right here. Just one second. It came out to potential annual cost savings of... I thought it was around $30,000.
Yeah, it's decent.
Yeah, $38,000 to $39,000. Okay, now we'll still need chemicals and utilities, but they will come in combined compared to what the other facility, the same facility uses. In Michigan, I think it was about $5,000 or $6,000 combined chemical and utilities versus $8,000 a year in chemicals for the big pool and about $6,000 a year in utilities. So that's about $14,000. So, what, just replacing it with the splash park would be a cost savings right there. And then, of course, $25,000, we could eliminate the lifeguards and just, I believe, have maybe two attendants supervising. You know, upon initial, you know, I thought we could really try to harness the pool area, but after meeting with them, I don't know what the mayor's take was, but, but I was really, it, it made the most sense to repurpose the pool area. Mayor, do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I've been thinking a lot about this since we met and I'm kind of torn, you know. One of the questions that came up, okay, what about, you know, the Learn to Swim program? And I did talk to Chris and Chris says we haven't had that program in three years. So what other options do people have? We did talk today and the, the school is, is now at fourth grade level. They do have the pool there now. They're, they're teaching kids to swim at that level. The YMCA gives lessons, you know, at that level. So, so, you know, I've been trying to go through everything in my mind and where, where we're going to get, you know, maybe some questions from the public.
Sure.
So, I guess from a financial standpoint, it's, it's the way to go. You know, like that. One of the things that Chris and I talked about, the elimination of, of the lifeguards and that. And I did see a note in, what's his name's notes there that we still may have to, depending on, on the depth of where the kids would slide into. We still may have to have a lifeguard or two there, but we won't have to have four. So, I, I think it's, I think if we're gonna, yeah, if we're gonna do it, let's, you know, it's the wise thing to do is, is where it's now so we don't have to build out.
Paul?
So, I think the lifeguards, for me, that, that issue jumps right out because there's a, you know, a shortage of lifeguards, right? We've had staffing issues over there. People just don't want to do that for whatever reason. It doesn't mean we don't need lifeguards, right? Like this, to me, if we eliminate or reduce the need to have them at this pool, that makes it more likely that we're going to have available lifeguards at the Franchot Wayne Pool, which is a big attraction, right? So, to me, that makes a lot of sense in, you know, a slightly different way.
Okay. Alderman?
Yep. I think it's kind of, it was the way that I was leaning because talking to other folks with other municipalities that had gone ahead and put splash pads in, they, probably 90% of them eliminated their pool. And a lot of it came back to liability. And a lot of it is because they just don't have the staff to run it. Mayor, did Chris tell you if he had any interest in the, but the positions? You know, he's posted week after week.
Yeah, we do have, we do, and the YMCA just posted they're, they're having a class here coming up. So, we do have some interest. I can't tell you how many. I know definitely two right now. And so, and they had a class out at Portfield. I guess they, nine completed the course there. So there is some, you know, there is some possibility of this year, which I don't know if we'll, now we're just probably, I don't know if we'll open the pool or not this year. That's a decision we have to make.
Right. And over the last couple of years, the numbers have continually gone down and then COVID. The other thing, I was over there walking when Dave Crandall and Ally were over there making, doing measurements. And there was this huge manhole that we would have had to either lift up or move. So I think it's a good idea to just stay in that space that we already have and I think the funding will fit. So I'm supportive of it.
One other thing that I thought could be a potential, a positive for the, this site and repurposing the existing pool area is if this is going to be as, as large of a success as I think we believe it is going to be, it, it opens up more room for five years or 10 years down the road if we wanted to expand. And, and that's something else, you know, as kind of a facility gets maybe, you know, everyone's kind of used to it. You expand and put in something new that's, that acts as a new draw. You know, that's what things like, places like Waldemir do or whatever. And there's, there's obviously an endless amount of really cool features that could be opportunities for us to pursue in the future. So, are there any hesitations? Because that is part of the, you know, as they do the design work, they've got to know what footprint we're looking at. Is there any hesitations from the council?
The other thing I would say is if you're going to take the pool down next year is, Chris said, and we were talking with Chris before and we brought this up. Chris said the pool has been open for two years now so he doesn't know what kind of problems he's going to have. So it might be wasted money if we try to open up for one year, do those repairs.
Fair point. It's a fair point.
Yeah, I would say if, if everything works fine and that, we go ahead with it.
Right.
If pumps are broken, maybe it's investment, maybe we hold on.
Maybe you said this, this isn't going to add a huge amount of cost to the project, right? It's not going to add $100,000 to the bottom line.
What's that?
Get rid of the water.
No, this is going to have the opposite effect.
Okay.
This is going to be a tremendous cost savings.
All the fill and concrete.
All of that is, right. This is going to be a tremendous, so, so when we talk about the cost savings of not using new footprint, everything is there. Power lines are there.
Got it.
Everything, all, all the hardware that you need is underneath that concrete that they can tap into. They'll, and they'll dig all of that existing concrete up. It'll have all new concrete work all around it. It'll make it so that our dollar stretches even farther so we can add more features to it. I brought up, Linda had mentioned the, having lights, LED lights. They're going to build that into the model. And so, you know, I think it makes it even a better, a better plan going forward. Okay. All right. I wanted to communicate that. I did send you guys the emails, so please read it over. If you have any questions, let me know. I'll work with the mayor to reach out to Jason and Clark Patterson Lee so they can get working on the new footprint and the change of direction. All right. I have nothing else. I'm going to make, no committee reports. I'll make a motion to adjourn. Could I get a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Alderman Gonzalez. All in favor? Aye opposed or adjourned?
Okay, we're going to jump right into finance. The record show all aldermen are present. Approval of the previous meeting from March 29th. I'll make a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Unfinished business, obviously, is the budget. New referrals for consideration. The first on the docket is water and sewer rates. Okay, who's going to?
Len's already talking about that. Brad is, Brad is on vacation this week, so.
Okay, which board is it?
This one.
Okay.
This one.
No, we were looking earlier, it's like.
I, I have some without.
Thank you, Len.
This is just one page, John.
That's just one page. I just did, um.
Um, okay, we need one more picture.
There's just one page.
Just one page.
What?
So this is water?
Yes.
So I have water. This is water.
This is water.
I can give the tax. I have the tax.
Which is this? Sewer. Water.
You should have three. One for water, one for sewage, and for tax.
I have tax.
Okay, sewer's gone.
They have water.
Len, you gotta, you got, things gotta go the same motion, man. We're getting all sorts of confused here.
It's after five.
That is, there's three sheets. That's property tax.
Take one of these. You have property tax?
Yeah, we all have them. You should have all three.
This is just extra.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just extra.
I thought, I'm sorry. I do not have one. What do I not have?
This is what you need to have.
I don't have water.
We have to get these to Vernon, so.
Water. John, he's the water quarter.
I'll send a picture to Vernon. Is that water?
See that?
He's bringing you one.
All right. I'll send Vernon it. All right.
Vernon, have you had your budget? Your current budget?
I didn't bring any of that stuff in.
Oh, okay. I was going to say, these are all pages in the current budget?
Yeah.
Yep.
Kind of put him overweight in his luggage, right?
All I bring is a backpack. That's all I need. Everything else is here.
I'm sending you...
I got it.
Okay, so that's water, sewer, and property tax rates. All right. Let's start with water and sewer.
For, for water, there's, we have 2.3 and plus an increase. I know you asked for 2.5, 2.25, I believe.
Yeah.
But I tried to make it work with that number. I could unless it would cut some expenses. So I put 2.3 if we don't cut anything, so it's fair. And as far as sewer, there's no changes for the initial sewer. The only changes is going to be for industrial, like 5%.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
Are you guys okay with 2.3?
Aye. And, and the fact that we are not touching sewer is, is, is a compromise. I mean, we're not, we're not adjusting, you know, sewer rates. So, it's not like both are going up. And, I mean, we don't believe that's going to put us in any 0% to the sewer budget. Are we taking any out of the sewer fund balance? And that we're still in a good position there?
Yep.
All right.
Okay, so moving on, budget discussion.
I've got a quick question. I apologize, Linda, if I am to ask. As far as the sewer goes, how much of that debt, how much debt are we dealing with there? We're still dealing with the bulk of the 23 mil, I mean, it's not up there, right? But that, we're still dealing with the bulk of the $23 million sewer treatment plant, correct?
Yes.
This is 2016. I didn't know about it.
Yeah.
2015, four.
Right?
It's not on there.
And, and what is our, I probably got it. The debt service, we're, we're comfortable, we're, we're okay?
Yeah.
Okay? Okay? All right.
Hey, I wanted to jump in with a comment too, after Len's.
Okay.
Oh, you, Vernon.
Okay, thanks. I went back and checked our notes, our, our minutes from last year when we had this conversation. And I, when I looked it up, I, I see that we talked a lot about water and sewer and raising the rate. And it was suggested at one point that we raise water and sewer at 3% over the next three years to help soften the blow of any other necessary increases. And then, the proposal last year was 1.5%. And one of the all the persons actually mentioned raising it to 2%. So, if we're doing zero, I can't, I can't really hear you guys, some of you anyway, but I can't remember what the percentage was for the sewer. But I see we are, what we're doing, are we, we are doing the 2.3% for the water?
For water.
For water.
Water.
For water, but sewer, we're standing at zero?
Yep.
Okay.
Except for the industrial or the commercial.
Did you hear that?
Looks like he froze.
No, that's just him pretending. The only point you want to get off the phone.
I believe part of the conversation was that by raising the industrial, that can make up a lot of, a lot of, in the sewer.
Okay.
That we don't have to.
Okay.
Did you, did you hear everything, Vernon?
I just heard, I just heard that, Mayor, thanks.
Yeah, I'm comfortable.
Yep, take that up. Okay. Len?
And the, the last shit that I have is for taxes. I don't know if you want to get into that right now or you want to wait.
What's your pleasure?
Oh, so we could go and move that first, then we go back to taxes.
No, I, I, let's, let's have a tax conversation.
Okay. So I, I have the rate as 2% for everybody. It said 30, 30 cents per thousand each for everybody. So we, we were at 15.46 last year. No, 15.60 last year. If you minus 15.60, from 15.46 this year, that's 30 cents per thousand.
Okay. And what would 1% be? Would be 15 cents?
15 cents.
Okay, so I'm going to.
Well, I, I, I'll, I'll, I'll.
I mean, if I, if I, if I.
I'll be happy to.
If I may add, and we, we, we're well under the tax cap in the state because the state asking, asking for 7.4 million, I believe, with the tax value.
So what is our tax cap in the state with percentage wise?
They don't have their full number working, but I think it's 7.4 million dollars. We could have gone through, but we didn't.
Okay, but, I mean, percentage wise? Because each year, you know, they would tell us what percentage we needed to stay out here.
Was 2.2, 2.02%.
Okay.
And we stay at 2% instead of 2.02%.
Gotcha. Okay, John, you wanted to say something?
Sure, I'll, I'll lead off. Thank you, Linda. So as far as my, my two cents, so... So, personally, looking over the budget, I would like to see us trim as, as much as we can, if not, at least, at least half of the amount being taken out of our fund balance. So you, you all, those of you that have worked with me in the past, I do worry about falling back into a situation where we're relying on our fund balance to pay our operating expenses. So, you know, for really all intents and purposes, I think the budget is, is very lean. There may be some opportunities to trim 100,000 or 120,000, try to get that amount. $240,000 being requested for fund balance, to try to cut that in half. Just, I, I want to protect that allowable spend or that fund balance and keep it for capital expenditures. One recommendation that I can offer would be if there are areas in the budget that are one-time expenses, for example, and I know that, I mean, these are just small examples, but I know Len, the clerk's office and the auditor's office talked about office upgrades. That could be, you know, there could be a separate series of one-time expenses for office furniture, office upgrades, things like that that could be outside of the budget that we could appropriate. And I would feel comfortable using fund balance for those sorts of one-time costs. So, so that's, that's kind of my, my feeling. I, I just worry about putting things into budget lines and then, and then they stay there into the future. And so, that's one way we can try to remedy that. The other is I, I firmly do believe and support the idea that we have to raise taxes 2% this year. We came in at 0%, I believe. Let's see. We, if we look back, last year, we settled at 1% and the year before that was 0%. And that was in the thick of COVID. And that's, that was the steps that we made at that point in time to help our constituents and our residents. And we did tap into fund balance to help balance the budget. But now we're out of COVID and prices are skyrocketing all around us. All right? We don't have the luxury of telling union employees they can't get their, their negotiated rates. That's, that's pushing, that's putting an increased burden on our budget. And every time we fail to raise property taxes, I know it's, if it was up to constituents, we'd never raise taxes. I get it, all right? I know it's not, it's not a, a real popular thing, but it's the financially prudent thing to do. And so, I do believe fully that now that we are out of, the thick of the COVID pandemic, we need to raise our property taxes 2% this year. Since things like gas is up 20%, inflation is at 7%. We've heard how many times from the department heads talking about how expenses, utilities and so on have increased so much. So I, I really believe in that. And, yeah, that's my, that's my two cents.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'm with you, John. I think we need to stick with that, stick that course, stick with that, to that course. And, you know, I think it's, like you said, costs are rising. We need to make sure that we can still maintain our level of services. I know it doesn't seem like a huge difference, you know, like, whoa, what's going to happen if we don't do this this year? Well, inaction now can lead to bigger problems down the road. And any, any cut we make now to taxes is very likely to become, and, you know, get put back in at a later date when we're, when we're raising rates 4% because it's either that or we're going to lay off or we're going to reduce services or whatever. So, that's all I really have to say.
Yeah, I'm on board with those guys, or with you guys. I think we're coming out of a time when we reduce taxes, you know, maybe, maybe more than we should have. So we got to make up a little bit. If 1% gains us a little bit, then that's what we should do.
The other thing I like to, just add my two cents is, John mentioned gas prices are up 20%, inflation's up 7%. So everything's going up. But I just, like I said, the county came in with a 0%. The school board came in with a 0%. And I realize they're getting funding from the state. We just received ARPA funding at $1.4 million that the feds gave us for, because of COVID and for emergency use or so forth. So that's money that we've had that we wouldn't have had if it wasn't for COVID. So, 1% reduction is about $75,000. So I can't understand why, because we got 1.4 million in the ARPA funds, why we can't find or cut, trim $75,000 and give it a 1% increase. I'm not saying we should go 0, but let's try to meet in the middle and help the, oh, let's face it, Oleen's full of senior citizens. And let's, if we can give them a break because we got those ARPA funding, let's, let's go with a 1%.
Catawba County got 14.7 million in ARPA funds.
Yes, I know.
Okay. Just saying.
The city, and, and the city of Oleen, about 60 or 70% of their budget is from New York State. We don't have that luxury.
The Oleen School District.
Yeah, I was, I'm sorry, the Oleen School District. The Oleen School District, yeah.
Just to clarify, 1% equals about 75,000. That's what you told me a few weeks ago. Does that change?
Well, I, based on the actual cost of the budget, actual price, if I do 1% of what the budget is right now at $18 million, that's $181,000. You can cut 1% right now.
Okay. Because usually it's much lower than that, the 1%. Anybody else?
Yes, I'd like to comment on that one. I, I agree that, I don't, I don't think it's sustainable. You know, I'm, I'm new to the council, but I know over the years, I know that there was situations in the past where the city of Oleen had issues with, I'm just going to say, maintaining their budget or being able to pay their bills. So with that, I feel like we can't stay or hover at 1%. Like I said, everyone would love to keep their taxes down low, but it's just not sustainable. It's not sustainable business practice. If we don't want to repeat and end up in a position where we end up tapping into our, our funding there, we, we're just going to end up having more long-term issues where we have to do things like, like Paul said, you might have to lay off or change the process of how we do things, our normal process around with the city operations. So, it, it's time, you know, and I know that we gained some funding from ARPA and some other things, but, so haven't, the county still hasn't, the, the school district. But like we talked about last year, I also looked that up from the previous year, March 16 notes and March 30 notes. And we also discussed in there about lowering our property tax to the 1%. But in the future, we would have to come up to whatever amount we had decided, you know, as a council. So, that's it.
Thank you. Sonya?
Well, given that 1% now is 184,000, that kind of shifts things from the, the 75,000.
Yeah, but I'd like to get a clarity on that because that's never been that high for 1%.
It's never been that high for 1%. It's usually run around 60,000.
Sixty, seventy thousand.
It's never been that high for one percent. It's usually run around sixty thousand, seventy.
Why do you base the one percent up though? Is it from the actual budget cost itself, or is it from the difference from last year to this year?
I just, I just don't think that's an accurate number. I, and I'm not sure how you got there, but that's, we've always been told in the past it's sixty percent equals one percent, and you told me a few weeks ago seventy five percent equal, or seventy five thousand equals one percent. And I just think a hundred and eighty four thousand is like.
That's not right.
That's not right. Um, but and.
I can corroborate that. As long as I've been on the council, that it's always been like, one percent is about seventy thousand in our in our operating budget. But.
Sonya?
That's, go, I mean, if I may, that's been the soundbite from the previous, uh, auditor.
So that was wrong?
Because one percent clearly of eighteen thousand is a hundred and eighty four thousand.
That's what I'm basing it on.
It's never been that high.
Let me do the difference between the two, last year budget and this year budget, and with the one percent of that, I see what that is. Give me one second.
Sure.
One of the things I would say that we should look at going forward for budget is to look to see what other, um, companies and stuff have done. Um, Catarcas County has to look to see which, um, if we look to add positions can be, um, you know, can we do an RFP or something to send it out so that we're not incurring additional, um, carrying, uh, additional costs for retirement, et cetera, going forward. Um, and I I'm new, so I don't know really what it is, but I can tell you, when Catarcas County did that for mental health services, there was a sign, there was an amazingly significant, um, cost savings to the county. You know, so even if we're looking at down the road of like, um, somebody that's in animal control, you know, to do an RFP and stuff, takes them off the city, you know, in terms of benefits and stuff too, might be worth looking at.
Sure. Um, the the, a couple of things that I was thinking, and John brought up, are fund balance. You know, at the end of the year, our encumbrances go to different places. You can put them into the fund balance, you can put them into contingency. So it'll be interesting to see where we come in at the end of the year. Um, I'm not married to, um, going to one percent, two percent. Um, but I just think we just have to, we owe it to our constituents to talk about it and to clarify the numbers. And I think, you know, I remember when COVID started and we were all petrified that our sales tax was gonna be taking nosedive. It never happened. In fact, it went up. Um, and I think it's, and I'm not sure when the next time Len gets the numbers from the state, but it'll be interesting to see if it's still hanging in there or going up. But there's a lot of things that that go in. And I think, you know, we've received grants over the past year, we lose the ARPA funds, and I think we're using our ARPA's, ARPA funds in a smart way. So I just think, we just need to discuss it. And I think, um, as I said, I'm not married to a number right now. I would like, love to come in at zero, but sometimes, you know, reality just doesn't fit what you what you wish for. John?
So the difference in the pro, so there's eighteen million dollars, right? There's a lot of different ways we get funding and and revenue. So that the the difference, the one percent or two percent, one percent is about seventy three thousand dollars. So if we look at the difference in real property taxes, okay, so if you just look at the seven point two million, which is in our current budget versus the seven point four million, uh, in the next year, in the proposed budget, it comes out to a difference of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So it's about a seventy four thousand dollar, one percent equals seventy four thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's about right.
Because because all we're talking about is real property taxes. We're not talking about all the other revenue items that that make up the budget.
And I, and that makes more sense and it sounds clear. Um, because, um, as you said, you don't encompass sales tax, you don't encompass everything.
Yeah, there's non-property tax items, sales tax, departmental income, right, all these different items.
So, yeah, seventy three thousand.
Tax revenue, property tax revenue only accounts for what? Forty percent of the total revenue for the city, yep. So it's, so one percent is about seventy three thousand dollars.
Yep, thank you.
So this is the number we're looking at then, correct?
That's correct.
Yep.
Got it.
That is correct.
So, any other questions?
Just so I can demonstrate, so you want to reduce the amount we're gonna take out of fund balance from two two hundred and forty thousand to a hundred and twenty thousand?
I would like, i- if possible.
And then an additional seventy three thousand?
No, I I I mean, I wanna say.
That's gonna be a, for one, that that Dave wants.
Yeah, but I I don't think I would support that. Okay. Just just so, just so that I throw that out there. I understand it's a great soundbite, but it sets us up for long-term failure. And I I would not support anything less than two percent. We we have gone, if we go back five years now, fifteen to sixteen, we had zero percent. Sixteen to seventeen, we had almost zero percent. Then we had one percent. Then we had two percent. If you, if any of you have have started with was crunching numbers while we were doing, uh, going through the budget, the salary increases because of longevity steps, okay? It wasn't one or two percent, it was like four percent, right? Because people get longevity bonuses and step-ups and 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 I'm I'm sitting here saying, how is this sustainable? If we continuously go with zero percent or one percent, every so often, we gotta bite the bullet and and we gotta do two percent. Um, and and then, you know, next year, if the, like Linda brought, if our sales tax keep coming in, gangbusters, we got new businesses opening up. Then we can reevaluate. But but, you know, to go back to Dave's point about the ARPA money that we've received, most of that's already it's been been spent, and most of that's already being planned to be spent on capital, like, yes, things that the city needs, capital investments. You know, I I'm I'm suggesting to the mayor, things that the city needs and residents need. Sure, we can tap into fund balance, but let's use it for repairs, oh, you know, what what was it? Uh, you know, additional work needed to the back entrance and the fire hall needs this and that. I mean, that's what we should use fund balance for. Um, I just get really skittish about using that for operating expenses.
So my question is, if we're asking the mayor to cut, we're taking out of fund balance, where does he make that up at?
I'll have to take a look at it, see if we can pick that up, yeah.
And and just what John said, like, like, for example, um, uh, desks for the clerk's office, right?
Right.
That's a one-time expense. How often is is Frank gonna need a new desk? Every twenty five years, or maybe every ten years, like?
So right out of a hundred and twenty thousand, right there, it was like, five for your office, five for his office, that's ten thousand dollars, cool. That could be pulled out and we could use it as a one-time expense, right, for for city building upgrades. And so that, I don't know.
We can go back and look at all of all those, uh, all of the things like that in the budget that are one-time expense.
And some of those, we could see if they fit into the ARPA funds. Because if it's a one-time expense, maybe we can fit it in there somewhere. Um, Vern, I'm sorry, I was looking at Paul. You wanted to ask something?
Yes, I did, to make sure, yeah. So I wanted to add on that, um, along with things like the desks, um, I think the some of the software upgrades and the one-time computer, uh, upgrades, uh, that was mentioned by our IT department. I think things like that, it's it's a one-time cost, uh, it's something that you purchase one time, next time you'll purchase again, what, ten years from now, five years from now? So I think that's something else that we can look at, you know, through a one-time purchase. And then where I, you know, side on earth caution with the fund balance, last year, we had some incidents in Olean where we ran through our contingency money pretty quick with, uh, trees that fell down, you know, with the with the high winds. And, uh, I think, you know, when you have something like that happen, we need to be able to have some type of funding, be able to have to help with, uh, these issues, you know? You never know what's gonna happen, you know, natural disaster wise. So I think that was something that that stuck out big for me last year. Uh, you know, with those, the big trees and and the issues, I mean, it it was a matter of minutes. And we had police and fire dispatch all over the whole entire city. So that was just one of the other things that stood out in my head.
Yeah, and I do believe we still have a hundred thousand, uh, contingencies in this year, right?
Uh, we have eighty five.
Eighty five.
Oh, it's down to eighty five?
Cause we used fourteen thousand dollars out of it. Um, green, green color down there, green. We got a green. Did you open the first one?
Oh, yeah, over here.
But we already talked about, uh, about the IT department and what we need there, eighty six thousand three hundred, and taking that out of the ARPA funds. So I think that's what you're referring to, Vernon?
Yep.
Yeah, but here's.
Yeah.
Here here's a, here's another, just, I mean, and I'm not gonna go through it line by line, but do we, do we lease? Do we lease most of our police cars?
No.
So why is there forty five hundred dollars in repairs to auto for the police department?
Uh, that's the, uh, that is the, uh, the, um, things that the city garage can't do. That would be, uh, if we back into something, uh, you know, that we have to repair the car, that's not covered under the lease.
Of course, I don't know, maybe.
If we do the damage.
Dude, our tires, well, probably new tires would be.
Tires, uh, oil changes and like that. Those are things are all covered under the, under the, uh, DPW.
Right.
City garage budget. But there's the repairs to cars that, and you're like, uh, I'll give you an example. We had an accident, one of our cars backed into, uh, whatever, and they had to, they had to repair that. That's, uh, and it wasn't, uh, our deductible is more than doing the repairs. So that's what that line is in there for that.
Okay.
To redo those repairs.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You'll see it in the fire department line also.
Okay.
Anybody else?
No, I'd just like to, not to reiterate myself, but I'd just like to say, if if Mayor, if you could find an additional seventy three thousand, it would be really appreciated. This is the time when, I mean, we got free money that we had a hundred, one point four million dollars. And it's like, we got money to build splash pads, which I'm not putting down because I voted for it. We got money to build a six hundred thousand dollar park in a center of town, which I voted for. So it's, if we got money to do stuff like that, where it's only gonna benefit a certain percentage of people, if we can give the taxpayers a break, and it's not an election year for me, so I'm not campaigning or anything up here. So, so I'm just saying, if we can give the taxpayers a break, I I think this is the time to do it, because we have the extra money to help us out on our budget.
I'll do whatever the majority in the council wants to do. But, uh, we have, just a layer by now, we have to have our budget passed by the fifteen. So that's ten days away. You know, it's gonna take, you know, a week, we can take a look at things, but, uh, I mean, if the if the majority of the council is okay with the two percent increase, then I think that's what we're gonna say. Cause that's a lot of work, uh, you know, to delve into it and then come back and forth and say, well, okay, no, we're not gonna take that, we're not gonna take this, so.
I mean, let's keep in mind, right, what 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 the request that we've put before is essentially cutting two pers- oh, uh, what, a percent and a half out of the budget. Right, we're at, I I mean, what I feel comfortable by eliminating a hundred and twenty thousand dollars o- out of the spend, I mean, he's gotta, he's gotta come up with that, plus now another seventy three thousand, so that's two hundred thousand dollars out of the budget. The difference is, one doesn't hurt us long-term. One is a benefit long-term. The other hurts us, right, down the road as as prices, I mean, who knows what inflation's gonna do next year? Have we seen any projections?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, not only that, I mean, I, my input is, I mean, I feel like a two percent, any year, anything less, it's like, somebody did a great job, you know, did some amazing job. And, you know, being here three years now, I mean, there are a pile of things out there that if we have some kind of access that we could tackle that need to be done, whether it's dead trees, but whatever. There there's a ton of stuff that kind of builds and looms, but it hasn't, hasn't shown its face, and and we can go there. To me, two percent or less is is a benefit, and I I don't even, I don't even see the point of being less than two percent, ever.
But keep in mind, in our current budget at two percent, we put aside fifteen thousand for trees. Remember, we just did that manage, tree management plan that we're supposed to do.
Yeah, the whiteboard was that, that's like, that's addressing like three medium-sized trees.
Yeah.
And there's, I I I feel like we've got a hundred, hundreds to deal with.
But we haven't put anything aside for that.
No, and something I wanna bring up also is I I think we've, I think we've missed the sidewalk program.
Yeah.
This year. That needs money too.
Yeah, and that can come out of contingency, I feel.
Yeah, I mean, I I agree. Yeah, I I agree. I, that was something that I thought we would, when we kind of dive into the capital projects and and contingency funding. I agree, Jason. I mean, your ward, my ward, I mean, all of our wards to a certain extent, we all have the the sidewalk issues. Um, and so, uh, yeah, that that needs to be a priority. Right, when we talk about helping homeowners, having their tax bill go up, whatever it is, three bucks versus the homeowners we help setting aside, right, fifty thousand dollars or twenty five thousand dollars in the sidewalk program? And then they, you know, the city pays half that cost to replace those sidewalks, that's where they see that, that's where our money is well spent. Um, so.
I agree. Sonya?
You know, I I, you know, I guess I have to say I'm I'm with the two percent. I mean, to give some example to the public and stuff, if we look solely at the the police department and we look at personnel services and the cost increase, that's two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Right, with an additional twenty seven thousand for overtime. And it has to be made up somewhere, because the issue is, I see, is nobody wants their taxes to raise, but everybody wants us to keep the same amount of services. And if we're going to, and these are contractual, it's not like we can control this stuff.
Correct.
So it has to come from somewhere, you know?
Yep, I, and.
And that's a ten percent jump.
Yeah.
Right? That's not a, that's not a one percent jump, right?
Right.
Because we we have a new budget or a new contract with the police, that's a, that's a ten percent increase that is a contractual obligation. You're absolutely right.
And that's just one department.
Yeah.
Vern, I see your hand up.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I'm glad that was brought up, because that is a perfect example of a past practice where something was left alone for so many years and and we have to play catch-up down the road. And 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 so that's a perfect example. And that's why they had that increase of the two hundred plus thousand dollars for personnel. I mean, they just got the new contract, they all got rate raises, try to bring them up to a salary that's comparable to twenty twenty-two. And the same thing's gonna happen for all the other departments and everything else around this city. So we have to prepare for that. In order to prepare for that, we have to raise taxes. Perfect example. Thank you all for your call.
Anybody else?
Well, if I may add, it's a good point, and it's coming, because we have fire coming soon, then the next year's gonna be the CSEA. So, it's coming.
We have to be able to keep pace with everything else that's going on.
We have fire next year, or this year.
Fire, we're negotiating right now with fire, and we started negotiations with the CSEA, which, uh, their contracts expire on May thirty-first of this year, so.
Yeah, and it it's a big chunk of our budget, is is just having the people to serve the public.
And and that, what what did COLA increase this year for social security?
Negative.
I thought it was seven percent.
Well, if it was.
I mean, I know social security isn't a lot, but I I thought retire, my my retirees' social security.
Uh, we didn't see a big increase.
Yeah, I don't think it went up there.
Five point nine.
Yeah.
Five point nine.
But that's still, that's six percent, right? So my point being, everyone is going to be playing the fact that we've, we're having this inflation and, you know, what, when we first joined the council, we saw rates of one percent or one and a half percent for CSEA. I mean, this is the prime time for unions to be negotiating while inflation is seven or eight percent.
And remember, in two thousand twenty-three is where you're gonna see increases for the council. You know, we voted that increase. So everything's going up.
Yeah.
You know, the price of everything's going up. I think, uh, we talked about this in fleet management, just the gas, the oil, the tires, everything. Um, with the, our bids, you know, we just saw that with the Oak Hill Park, you know, the wood. Um, so that's reality. But I think, um, what I'd like it to see us do is, when we get our encumbrance at the end of the year, because remember, the last two months of the year, it's sort of like Christmas, everybody wants to spend whatever they have left. And whatever we have left, I would like to see that go into contingency part of it to cover things such as the sidewalk program. Maybe put more in the tree program, because I have several people that would love to get these huge trees out of the subways that are making their sidewalks go like this. They can't afford to do it on their own, but it's in the subway, that's, so the city has to help us. So it is, just those little things just drive people crazy.
Yes.
Um, so I think we're on the right track. And what I'd like to do before we decide on one, two, I I'm thinking we're heading towards two, is look at our capital projects right now and see what we wanna keep, wanna eliminate, um, and go from there. So Len, turn around. They're over here.
So we had the Red Standard six border cuts, forty two thousand dollars, asking for, so is that something you guys wanna find or fund? I don't know.
Per- personally, I I I think we, um, that's not a big one for me. Per- personally, I, I, I think we, um, that's not a big one for me, the, the bumper cars. It's a great idea, okay, but I think we, uh, again, I'm not the end all be all, I'm gonna, I'm just happy to throw my two cents out there. We have invested in the digital sign and we're investing a million and a half dollars into a new facility, a new splash park facility there. Um, I'm, it, it would be one thing if that ice rink was not utilized, but it is utilized and.
I don't know where they find the time to put them in, cause hockey takes up pretty much all the time over there.
So, so I'm not on board with that.
Yeah, I, we can put a hold on this.
I, I agree. There's nothing against Chris, he's doing a great job.
Yep.
We're putting, uh, one point five million into that, that, uh, that property. I don't, I say we definitely.
Yeah, I agree. Splash park opens.
Yeah.
Chris beats our projected revenue.
Yeah.
Give him his bumper cars.
Yeah, right, absolute, uh, no, that's absolutely true. It's a great point.
That's true.
Okay, are we still on track then, the IT department to take, uh, eighty-six thousand three hundred out of the, uh, well, we'll call it the first year ARPA funds?
Yes.
I'm in favor of that.
Yes.
And in fact, Bill, how quick can we get that six thousand dollars, that online meeting thing set up? Because I mean, this is a prime example where.
Yeah, I, I think we can get that pretty quick.
You know, where, oh, you know, one of us, I mean, the day and age, we're, we're all, one of us is traveling, we wanna tune in, you know, Vernon could be more interactive with us.
Jason may have an answer for that, how quick can we get that? We could, we're as quick as tomorrow.
So, I, I, I think, is, is anybody against that? I mean, that would put, uh, a TV screen right here, it's interactive, they're here, we can see them, I think that makes the most sense.
And I think it's ARPA funds, it's not some sort of tasking to pay.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I, I think we've already moved all these from the budget, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I have, uh, I, I call that the shaman.
Yeah. No, I, I think that makes a lot of sense, today's day and age.
Okay.
And we have, um, fire, are we done with IT?
Yes.
We have fire, we have phase two masonry repair, sixty-three thousand dollars, we need funding for that.
Yeah.
The chief said something today, did he talk to you?
No.
That, that, they, uh, they got a new quote on the one for down at the, uh, central fire. And they were getting, gonna have by tomorrow to have another quote, uh, for the one over at, uh, station one. So we'll have some different prices. I believe he said that, that, uh, the quote that they have for down there came down, I, I can't remember what he said. So we'll have, uh, we'll have some better prices tomorrow on those two.
So, does this, is this sidewalks in front of the station?
Yes.
Okay, cause he was going to check to see if part of that is sidewalks that are gonna be replaced or repaired with our street scape for North Union Street. So he was looking into that, so I would put a hold on that.
Yep.
The sixty-three thousand.
No, that's the seventy-five thousand one, the concrete.
That's the concrete.
The, the concrete.
Yeah, the seventy-five thousand.
The one on Union.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The sixty-three thousand is the mason, like the mampet, whatever, at the.
Oh, the masonry at, uh, at, uh, over at.
First Street.
First Street.
That's the first one.
That's the first one, sixty-three thousand dollars.
So it's the seventy-five thousand one.
That's the sidewalk, the uneven sidewalk trip hazards.
That he's gonna look into.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's the one that I think we should wait and see what he finds out.
So what about the sixty-three we're gonna fund out?
I'm comfortable with doing one this year and one next year.
Doesn't matter.
Okay, so we're, whichever, whichever one has the, the, the greater risk ultimately.
I have a feeling it's gonna be that top one that needs the most attention.
Yeah.
It's an overhead.
Exactly. It's the metal rife, but we don't have the rusty.
Yeah, that, that, that one we need to do at, uh, station one, we need to do that masonry work.
Cause he said it was rusted kind of through, if I remember correctly.
And he told us that the last couple of years.
Okay.
No, I wanna ask.
Funding for that, where do you, where would you like to take the funding for that?
Um, I would just say the, 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 uh, general fund, um, the general fund, the surplus.
Five fifty, five, five there you go.
Right?
Okay.
Let's just put it in that. Let's just get through it all and then, then we'll figure it all out.
Okay.
Sur- sur- while you're checking, yeah.
And concrete will just not live down until next year.
Well, he's gonna look in to see if it's covered by the contract.
And he also looks at generator concrete pad. I don't have a price for that yet.
I think, I, I wanna say that was being handled by, uh, building, our fire department building repairs, but we'll check on that one too.
Yeah, I think they said they would.
And also for the HVAC, we're gonna need extra funding, cause we have some that's not enough of what we have right now.
Now, is this part of the bigger HVAC project or is this a separate HVAC project?
This is, this is at the central fire, and this is the one where they, they, they bid it out and, uh, the bids came in. We only had one bidder and it came in like a hundred and fifty thousand. So I, I think the smart move here would be is for us to rebid it, see if we get more people to bid on it, and then we can come back to you for the additional funding that we need.
So would this be, um, like the HVAC here in our city building, a one-time thing that ARPA could cover?
Yeah.
I would suggest looking at that, and see if the ARPA would cover that for him.
Not to double back on the mason repair, but is that, remind me, is that a safety issue?
Yeah, he was talking about how if that thing comes down.
So it could actually fall, it's not a cosmetic, like it just looks.
Yes. No, he said it was rusted to there.
It's, uh, it's netted right now.
Yeah.
Okay, they made, uh, they made, uh, temporary repairs to keep it safe and it's, it has to be repaired.
And I think he's brought this to us the last two years.
I feel like we've been talking about it forever.
Yeah.
It's like, why is this still a thing?
What's the long-term need for station two? I mean, that, that thing's small, right? How many people work on it?
Well, they have, uh, one engine company works out of there, it's three men. And, uh, you know, historically, they've always said we needed two because of the railroad tracks.
So I mean, so I've heard that.
Yeah.
I'll mention, so I mean, I, I've lived here my whole life. In the last ten years, I can't remember once I've been stopped uptown. But not only that, I mean, you know, let's say you had to get to the other end of town. Uh, I just feel like there's routes that you could go where I can't imagine a train blocking, you know. Say you're headed down South End, so you, you go down Wayne and hit Ninth, Tenth, whatever's down in there, I just, I don't know. I feel like it's, it's something that's existed for a long time and it's stuck on us, so we've kept with it.
Well, you know, you go, you go Wayne and then if the tracks are blocked off, you know, you can't go down there. So, uh, to get, you know, so you go, you go Front Street, the ladder truck won't fit under, under the railroad bridge, so it's gotta go around that. So you got delay in time, so there's been, you know, the, the, years ago, they did, you know, looked at one firehouse centrally located, uh, you know. The existing central right now does not have, it's not big enough to house the equipment we have. So, so you'd have to take a look at that. I think a study needs to be done, uh, there may be a possibility of, uh, you know, going down to one firehouse.
I just have a feeling something to do with our technology, communication, all that over the last forty years has put us in a better situation than when we needed to fire off.
Uh, Bill, have you heard any more from the railroads, if they're still gonna lift it?
Yes. That's with, uh, that's, uh, right now, that's with, uh, DLT. The judge, there was a, uh, you know, I, I think everybody knew there was a hearing and, uh, the law, uh, uh, the judge basically heard all the testimony and has agreed that, uh, it's a good project and that should go forward. And now DLT is, is looking at everything. We were hoping to have that started this, this summer, we'll see, it's in DLT's hands right now.
And that could change things a little with the second firehouse.
Yeah, once we get the, the bridge raised and the, the road lowered a little bit and that changes, then, then the ladder truck will be able to get under there, so that changes things, so.
I want to bring that up, Jason. Okay.
Ente forty-one is already being funded on last year's budget. Um, we went to water and sewer, um, up on the street on the pass, it's, uh, cost two hundred and ten thousand dollars. I think we allocated two hundred and fifteen dollars off from last year's budget. So remaining needs to be funded, but like ninety, ninety, ninety-five thousand dollars more needs to be allocated for that. So is that something you guys wanna fund this year or what?
This is their house.
This is here.
The under, yes, that we all learned about.
The little underground house.
The twenty feet down.
That we all learned about.
Yeah.
If we pick, go ahead, Sam.
I was just saying, please remind me what the difference is between what's already allocated and what we need.
I believe we have a hundred and fifteen thousand allocated by now.
Can you just change that two hundred and ten K to whatever we actually have to pay? Like new spending?
So what it's, ninety-five thousand, but.
My thought is, I think the new generator itself was like fifty K of that. I think we could, I mean, first of all, the chance of, we, we haven't had an issue that I know of with power failure there. You could probably build the.
According to the previous notice, the generator was not for any of that cost.
Oh, really?
Generator was above and beyond that.
Yeah, he just, he didn't say that.
Really? Oh, okay. Well, I'll still throw in my two cents on the generator. We could build the, right up to where all it has to do is be bought, put in and hooked up. And hold back on fifty grand at some point if we need to.
Are you saying, Jason, just, uh, have it so that you can?
Like have a pad, have the conduits, whatever's needed to run the wires and not buy the fifty thousand dollar piece of equipment till you've decided to spend the funds.
Well, you know, the other thing you could do is, too, is have it wired up and everything and then bring in a portable generator.
Yeah.
You know, I, I know, uh, there was a, uh, New Hartford, New York, uh, they have several of their traffic lights that, uh, name intersections. And that's what they did, they had portable generators that they would take out, hook up and run, you know, to run those traffic lights. So, I mean, that's something we could do there.
Yeah, no, definitely. I mean, and the thing is, they, I mean, I, I work in service, put in these types of units for a living. I mean, you can buy one, but five years later, somebody's gonna become the atomic, yeah, it's a problem, it needs to place. Because things like that that sit and just exercise, they do not hold up well and they're troublesome.
Do we know how long this runs, that area?
There, there's no generator there, no. There's no, there's no backup power.
I agree.
Some of these, uh, some, some of these projects here with the sewer and water, uh, and I'll tell you, the one that's potentially gonna be expensive for, for us is the lea-, uh, the levy accreditation. Some of these, I mean, this could be a completely separate night of discussions. I mean, it's not something we have to do right now to, to pass the budget.
Yeah, no, I agree with you, but I agree with someone.
I think we should mark the ones that we should wait and have a whole discussion on.
No, I, I agree. Um, I mean, the ARPA funds aren't going anywhere.
Yeah.
The contingency, again, we, the can, how we break out and spend our contingency funds. I mean, I'm okay, I would be okay getting through, you know, some of this, but we can come back and have this discussion.
Yeah.
Uh, next week or every, you know, every two weeks.
Yeah.
None, none of this is tied to the budget, right?
I think we can narrow this down and, uh, you know, like where we wanna have our discussions.
Now, one thing, I do have a question about that, citywide vehicles, the twenty-three vehicles, is that in the budget?
No.
The current budget, it's not, okay.
No, no, that's, that's up for, that's up for this, uh, that's up for continual discussion. I still wanna, I, I, uh, I wanna reach out to, uh, to Enterprise and have a conversation with them about that and be able to bring back that information.
Because that would be, if that was, cause wasn't that six years worth of a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Right, so that would be an operating thing that would have to be included in the budget.
Right.
Not just a one-time cost.
Yeah, it'd be six years of a ninety-six, let's call it ninety-seven thousand.
Yeah.
Out of the general, uh, twenty-nine thousand out of water and twenty-eight thousand out of sewer.
So you wanted to talk to who, Bill?
Uh, Enterprise leasing.
Oh, okay.
And, and see what, uh.
What they could do.
See what we can do, yeah.
Okay. I mean, I'm, it's up to you guys, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with just holding off and having a separate discussion, cause none of this is, to me, has to come out of the budget. Because, one, we can use ARPA fund, another, we can bond, especially with the vehicles. Um, and then we're gonna be looking at leasing, that's fine. So I think, you know, we just get a copy of all the wish list. And then the other thing is to keep track of the first round of the ARPA funds, what we've, um, spent with our balances. And the second round coming up, where we are at that, keep track of that for now. And then over here, you have contingency for the general fund, the water fund and the sewer fund. And, you know, we know where they sit right now.
Yeah.
Does that, anyone have any questions on that, John?
I do, uh, I, in, in fact, I, I do, just because people, uh, in the past, we've liked to get the, the, the sidewalk program up and running su- right now, and so I would just say that we decide, so for next week, we could allocate in how much of the contingency would we wanna set into that? So they can start rolling that out, because people wanna start doing it in May, June, July.
I do believe they have a few people from last year we didn't get to.
Yeah.
So I do, and I'd be wrong, but was it thirty thousand or thirty-five we did last year?
It's about thirty, maybe more, I don't know.
I think we did twenty-five and then we upped it to thirty.
Okay. So is everybody comfortable staying at the same rate or do you wanna increase it?
Okay.
I think we're gonna stretch a little bit, you know, the third, at least start with thirty, where we want to.
Oh, yeah.
And if we have to, we could add to it?
Well, the fact that we have people on the waiting list.
So, so that actually would be outside the budget?
Yes.
It would be a, a, a you, a transfer from current contingency fund to the, that program.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Uh, one thing, uh, we, we do need, uh, we do need about eight thousand four hundred and, to finish the project here.
Yep.
Uh, for the, uh.
For the entrance.
Times, times square entrance.
Let's do that too, uh, contingency.
Okay.
Thirty thousand or thirty-five thousand, whatever you guys think, uh, for the sidewalk program.
And then, what did you say, eight thousand?
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand four hundred and twenty-something, somewhere in there.
Just back nine thousand. It's eight, so eight thousand and change, about eight, nine thousand dollars maybe.
So that's thirty thousand though, it's like, if I remember correctly, it's up to a thousand dollars for whoever applies, right? So we have like thirty people that, if they applied, do we know how many applied last year?
Oh, I know they keep pretty close to that.
Yeah, I know, we could probably.
Linda's on vacation this week, so she could, but I can ask, uh, I can ask Amber to look it up tomorrow.
And I, I do remember talking to Linda and she said there were a couple that we didn't get to last year, cause we ran out.
Yeah. And, and some of them only get a reimbursement of maybe three or four hundred dollars, it's not all, so I mean, they stretched that.
Yeah.
And it, it just does an amazing job.
Yeah, because what they, uh, at least under Bob, his process was DPW deemed which sections were covered under the.
Right, they want to mark.
So if you wanted to do your whole sidewalk, you were paying for the extra.
Right.
Unless the way it was for the bad.
It was just a dangerous spot.
Yeah, yeah, for the trip hazards and such. But it did go pretty decent, a lot of people utilized it, so.
But it, it's something that they get a value out of it. You know, I know I had several just on our street and they, the people that walk on the street were very appreciative of it, so.
And it gives us value, I think we should put more into the tree program, just like that, and get, get some momentum going on these trees.
I agree.
I think we should add some, because remember we talked about it, uh, and got rid of so, I was talking to Tracy before he passed, but, uh, uh, Code's only had like ten thousand dollars in there to go and take care of problems. And Tracy was saying he needed at least another ten thousand dollars, cause Alderman are coming in with these complaints and he doesn't have the funding to, to get the issues resolved. Which I could put leans on people's taxes to get, to get that money back, too.
Is that under the blight, that ten thousand? Is that what it says there?
It's under, it's under, it's, it's, um.
Like professional contract.
Yeah, it's under like emergency situations where they have money to take down, you know, if something happens, and so.
Did they adjust that line at all, Dave?
No, I did it still ten.
It was still ten. Do you have any thoughts on that, Mayor?
I think if you move thirty into, you know, if you wanna move another thirty into, uh, the tree program, that'll, that'll help out with that situation.
Yeah.
So I had that same conversation with somebody from COLAS, same line item, and it, and, and my issue was with trees too. That ten thousand was, you know, for building these trees, with the problems, grass, grass, yeah.
All right, we can work on putting together a resolution for next week, um, and, and getting some of that funded then. Getting sidewalks and getting some of the tree blight issues or whatever funded, uh, so Code's can take care of things and, um. What do we, well, wait a minute, that's a line item. The sidewalk program is a capital fund.
Capital fund, yeah.
So.
So it looks like we have twenty thousand in the tree and ten in the emergency cleanup.
I mean, if we're talking about solidifying the sidewalk now, that we wanna make that a line item under DPW, I know we've talked about that before, because it's something we keep doing, it doesn't seem to.
The sidewalk is a capital project, isn't it?
It's a ca- the way it's operated.
He said we were budgeted, though.
The way, the way it's been operating, though, we've set it up as a ca- as a capital fund, and it's, I feel like it's, it's effective from track, like, for tracking purposes or something, I don't know.
Yeah, there was a whole thing around it.
I don't know, Jake, I mean, it's valid.
I think it's, well, two years ago, there was something weird where, what were we talking about, it made some kind of account negative or something, we weren't balancing the.
That's.
Which one?
What was happening, I know what you're talking about. What was happening was, uh, the, the, uh, portion that the, the individuals, the residents were paying was being, that was, uh, being counted into what we had there. And some of them were paying it in a timely manner, so it, it turned, made that, that, uh, that, uh, a line, uh, nega- a negative accounting in there.
So that's why we kept.
And weren't we also counting, like, the people that would apply for them versus the people that were forced?
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe that's why we kept it that capital.
We have some people that were paying, uh, on a, on a installment type plan.
Yeah, and I'll.
And that was, uh, that was.
Paul brings it up, I'm, I was thinking, I remember we were concerned, maybe our sidewalk program was getting whacked with some of the forest repairs. Will that continue, or do we have that straight away now, so it doesn't touch what we're trying to do with the?
I, you're gonna have to check on that, I know what you're talking, yeah, I'll have to check on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was supposed to be fixed, but I don't worry, that was, they were mixing.
Yep.
Right, yeah.
Two operations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One was the city's repairs, one, right?
Right.
Yeah, basically, if we tell somebody their sidewalk has to be fixed, to read code, and we send someone to go do it, right? We pay for it, and that, we need to, at least for our visual, to see that difference.
Yeah.
It was about, uh, it was about separating it out.
Yes.
It came down to just that simple process.
I think that was, uh, that was a, an issue in the, uh, audit office, and that was corrected.
One.
I just know it's a very popular program. Okay, any other questions, um, on the capital projects or the budget? I think we're kinda headed in the, a good direction.
Cause every two weeks, we come back to the list and, right, work on it?
We'll try to clean it up a little bit and have it, uh.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then Chief Fritterton can check on if that's included in that sidewalk program.
I, I do have one quick question, one that popped back in my head, um, and I know the mayor, you've, you've got a lot going on, or we, we had discussed it, we said we've, we'd, uh, think about it, or you'd look into different options, um, I still wanna point out the, um, you know, my, my, my opinion, and I think the opinion of some of the members on the council, is to, to see a full-time solution for animal control. And do we have any, have we made any progress there, um, or do we?
We've made some good pros- progress with that, uh, we have, uh, we have, uh, pardon me, just jumped on my head, uh.
Cindy, Cindy?
Cindy now?
Yeah, Cindy, Cindy now. Cindy now has been active, helping us with, uh, the dog matters right now, and to give you an example, uh, she, uh, was able to, uh, take, uh, eight dogs, uh, in, in the last few weeks, and, uh, get them, and, and get them adopted out.
Mm-hmm.
As you all know, the S C C A stopped taking animals from us, and, uh, there's, there's some issues up there with, with what's going on up there. But we are also using, uh, the town of Olian as, uh, is, is letting us use their, their kennels. So, uh, and they are, we're probably gonna end up coming to a, a agreement with them, they're gonna add on to their, their kennels, the town of Olian is, cause they also allow Cindy, uh, not this awesome, uh, dog control for the village of Allegheny, the town of Allegheny, and the town of Olian, and now, now us, so. She's, she's doing a great job, we still have to, uh, you know, the cat situation, we still have to, uh, you know, do that, but right now in the budget, uh, is eighty thousand dollars, so I think that gives us a little more money in there to, uh, find out if Cat Nippers is still doing things, and, uh, if not, we, we can move on to someone else taking care of cats, so.
I mean, why, why can't we come together, you know, we talk about a shared service all the time, why can't we come together with the town of Olian? With a, with a, with an employee with a service, and, and, and put together, I mean, again, you, you guys heard my spiel last time, I just, uh, I like the idea that our residents have some, a point of contact that they're able to call, not just for a loose dog, right? But for, there's a, there's a colony of kittens in my back shed, right? Uh, God help them if they, if it ends up at Vernon's house, but, um, we.
You have to quit feeding them.
But, you know, we, we, uh, or, or if there's an issue with a stray animal at a, at a dog park, or, or a, a, a do- a dog at a dog park, or if there's a loose raccoon running around your backyard, I mean, it, it just makes sense to have somebody that is a point of contact.
I mean, someone with a, with foxes, like, pre- and they didn't know what to do about it.
I have them in my backyard.
So.
They stand their side, I stay.
I was gonna say, what are they doing?
I mean, in all honesty, Bill, it sounds like a gr- you know, that was one of the holdbacks for us, was we didn't wanna pay for a facility. You know, there would be cost in building kennels, well, if the town provides the kennels, if the town provides the vehicle, why don't we hire the employee, and it's a shared service between the two? And we have somebody who's on call for any animal need, you know, they've put in however many hours here, they've gotta take calls for the town, I mean, I don't know if there's an opportunity there, but.
I think there is.
Something.
I would agree too, but I would also encourage us to look to not add that employee onto the city, rather to whether we do an R, R F P or, or something in that respect, so that we're not adding, you know, we've already talked about the, the increase that we're incurring with, um, like the police and stuff, so there's creative ways for us to, to manage and still be able to do the service.
And have like a independent contractor.
Yep, absolutely.
And share, and, and have that person shared with the town.
Are we allowed to do that under the union? Are we allowed to do something like that under the union?
If the contractor.
If, if the position doesn't currently exist.
Yeah, position does occur, currently, it, it does not currently exist, so yes.
Right. So maybe we could do that, that, I mean, just, yes, I, I don't care how it gets done, I just would like to see something that is.
Well, and in the past, whenever, um, municipalities created a shared position or a shared service, there's grant money out there, so maybe we could find some grant money that would help support that. Not just the position, but taking care of those.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but I think that's straight up.
Yeah, well, we can always try.
Go free in the county, the county's offered, too.
Well, I would like to see that, especially.
I, uh.
Uh-oh.
I met with the, uh, many legislators, and, uh, they told me that.
They're pulling their offer.
That's not an offer.
Really?
Yeah.
We had to talk to those people.
I will have to follow up on.
Yeah.
The conversation I had about that, may- maybe it's just been too long, it's, it's been a while.
But I, I think it's doable, and I think if we all sit down with the town, maybe Allegheny and us, and just share some ideas and share the cost, then not one of us is carrying the total burden, and look into some grants out there, because you never know unless you ask. And, and Carrie might know something that we don't know anything about, so.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Bill, you kinda know where we're coming from, so.
Okay.
Bell to you, um, anybody else?
I know, it's not budget related, but I, I heard that, I heard that Jacey Pennies is moving out in January, so I believe we can do this, save on another store from moving out, if it's true. I mean, is there anything Carrie can do, or, I was under the impression they were staying with the big village.
I think it's too old, too late, Dave, I think you should've been shopping there more over the past, uh, twenty years.
Yeah, I have not heard that.
I heard that from, um, when they, I overheard it, when he personally told me, I overheard about two employees talking about it.
Yeah, we hear a lot of things.
We'll have to do some inquiries tomorrow, so.
I actually do have one more thing, because Inta- Intanda had sent us a quote on, um, on cleaning, really in terms of the, the water treatment, um, plant, and you know, I'm just wondering, you know, not in this year, but going forward into next year or something, does it make sense to, to look to see if we can contract out some of that, so that, um, our emplo- our existing employees maybe can do other pieces of the jobs and work, you know, it, it's kind of like it doesn't make sense financially for me to go out as the nurse and, and clean up certain things, if we could contract it out and somebody else could come in a, a lesser rate to do it, so just kind of thoughts as we, as we go forward, you know, how we can help maximize the, the employees that we have, and look to pair halves, minimize some, some cost saves.
And I know the county for years have used Intanda for cleaning. Anybody else?
Well, I guess, well, my only thought is, it depends on whether, uh, when our employees clean, if it's because they don't have anything else to do, or if they're overworked and they don't have time.
Well, and I think that's a time study to be done, right, in terms of positions and where time is allocated, you know? And this was with all chemicals and equipment, right, so if we, we don't have to then incur those costs, what would be this cost saving?
Well, and I think this was connected to the water filtration, and I think the chemicals that they probably use for, um.
That's the sewer's treatment plant and the water filtration, yeah.
Right, right, but I think the chemicals we use are totally different than what they would be using, so we just have to look at, right, with that.
Yeah, but they're capable of doing that, I mean, the.
Oh, yeah, I'm just talking to the cost of the chemicals.
Intanda cleans, cleans the mold building, the chemicals.
It's just the, the chemicals that we purchase, I don't think they'll be able to purchase at a cheaper cost, that's what I'm thinking. So, it's a lot to think about. And I think you have to keep in mind contractual issues, too. Okay, anything else, John?
I made a motion to enter executive session to discuss personnel, um, matter, and personnel discipline.
I'll second, all in favor?